So I think we should rely on those professionals that we have like Betsy, Kelly, and so on to maybe brainstorm some programming ideas.
That's awkward, I get it because it's hard to have a work session with all of this going on. And that's okay, but we're talking about increasing opportunities for kids in school regarding wellness. Okay, and so we're looking for best practice, standards-based, what types of activities are we looking for?
Are you looking like support groups?
I'm thinking like support groups, and that can be maybe right before school starts, maybe during school hours, but maybe it rotates so that you're not missing the same class every time. Maybe it's after school, but something that focuses on whatever needs we have in the schools that children that are going through similar type events have somebody that they can talk to and relate to in a setting, not like part of the curriculum, but it would be like a separate group. Maybe parents sign off and say that their kids are going through this and they are okay with them seeing somebody during school hours. I just think that if you were to try and get in to see a psychiatrist or some kind of counseling session, you are looking at three to four months out. Like, and that's at minimum, and that's just starting. And if there's something really going on in someone's life, that's too long. So if you have resources available during school hours, I think that would make a huge impact.
Is this something more than child-focused, or like lunch bunches and all that?
Um, I just know like, I know that there are resources that, whether it's Child Focus or Beach Acres or any of those kinds of groups there, you can have someone come in that specializes in that during school hours, that can work with kids that are going through, I don't want to put any specific out there, like, I, I, but that way.
I wrote on here increased support group type activities for students during the day in and outside of school. So that's more activities related to this to better engage the students. I think I'm hearing that part. The next part is increased wraparound services, that was psychiatrists, opportunities, counseling-type opportunities. But we would want that to be inclusive of parent collaboration of operation in that process. So I took the liberty of putting that in important but not urgent. The reason I say that is because it is extremely important, but it's something that we're going to have to plan for if we're going to increase activities, and if we're going to start to branch out to provide additional services for students and include their parents. That's my thing here is the rule, it just means that's where I'm sticking it. If we want to shift it, we can certainly do that anyway, but I'm thinking that there's a lot of, some time to plan, action plans, timelines, and vetting of anyone who would be part of this process.
I would think that this would not be something that could necessarily be implemented, maybe this school year, but could be next. Like you said, a timeline and getting all that in line, I don't think, I don't think it would be possible to have it done before this school year's, but next year.
Okay, so now the website part of it, if I may do this. Website seems to be more of an important and urgent because it includes the information that we want parents to have. It includes the resources we want to have. It is something that can be done quickly to update our website, simple link, simple information to get to and access to that. And it also, I think I read in here, we can have some principal inclusion in that with what they're sending home with newsletters, to drive people to our website, to that single location where they can get resources regarding. And it wouldn't only be resources, it would be educational opportunities, including those that we're working with outside, like Mike Glenn's group, that's the Anderson Collaborative, that type of thing.
So, can I ask, do kids have issues with getting into Child Focus right now at school? To see a psychologist or anything, is there a waitlist or anything like that?
It depends on the building, but they all have obviously case loads that reach a certain point. And by this time of year, we're starting to experience waitlists.
So how long is the waitlist?
I have to go back and look and see what it is currently, but, and the intake process is also, is fairly complex and obviously involves parents through it, and that can take a period of time depending on what has to be put in place in the beginning. So I can get that information for you, or, so if you have that.
Has there been an increase in need of services this year compared to other years?
Because of COVID, we went down a little bit just because virtual services weren't received well and some were not. So we kind of fluctuated, and then it picked up again as the year went on. So I wouldn't say it's increased, it's kind of steady right now. There's no, there's a need, for sure.
So a lot of our ESTR funds went to extra, you know, maybe mental health counselors and advocates. When those funds go, will we need to fill those spots where there'll be a need once they leave? I mean, I'm not sure how many people that extra that is compared to what we normally have.
Our ESTR funds actually went to our, a lot of our support, with the exception of our support advocate, student support advocate, Rob. We use wellness funds for the support of our Child Focus counselors. And we also use our, our foundation funds pays for one, the Paige J. Hatton Foundation pays for one, Child Focus pays for some, it's like kind of a collaborative to try to staff all of our buildings, and the district pays for the three.
I mean, just, to me, it seems like we have tons of resources. A part of the packet that you guys made that I would like to see maybe presented to us, you know, so we can talk about all of the programs that we have. I think you guys have a great thing going, I think we just need to present that to the public.
And Scott, what I'm talking about when I, I wrote that down at the work session also, is really more of a culture shift within our district because we are, look at the numbers, you know, I've heard all kinds of things like, don't say suicide, you know, we should talk about, well, you know what? We have had suicides in our community, and it's tragic. And we know, I mean, the Health Department has said, right, there's like a mental health crisis with children. I think in general, I would like to see it destigmatized or normalized, or there's check-ins, there's something, training for teachers, you know, whatever. I'm not entirely sure what that looks like, but in general, this, we can't hide it or sweep it under the rug. And I personally would like to see a culture shift in that throughout the district where it is this, there is an emphasis on wellness, because when our kids are well, guess what? They're going to learn they're more successful and they feel like they belong in the classroom. That's empirical evidence, right, that's not conjecture. So that's kind of what I need. Now, what it looks like is where I need people like Betsy or Kelly to come in and kind of articulate what that would look like in terms of action items.
So I'm glad you brought that up. We have I have that with Children's Hospital, Child Focus, Mercy Hospital, University of Cincinnati. Who am I missing, Betsy?
Um, Children's Hospital. Yeah, it was the five, it's our tentacle.
Mercy, oh, Hamilton County Health Department Assistant Commissioner. What you just said, I mean, for anybody over here, we've been getting clear direction from our board that we want to dig into this and we want to really have a clear understanding of what we have, what's going on, and how we can continue to improve. That five-member group, those are suicidologists, those are pediatric specialists across the nation, those are mental doctors, that is psychiatric care across the nation, and it is also Hamilton County, which is to your point, Leslie, where we're collecting data. Those five individuals who represent significant players in this field are giving us information. So when we met the last time, they spoke to us about, let's talk about COVID for a moment, let's talk about the stresses in society right now with what's happening with the economy, what's happening in the Ukraine. Let's also talk about the lack of connection that students, all students have had over the last two years. And with this latest thing going on with Ukraine and gasoline prices and stress, it's elevating even more. And so, on that topic, we've talked about, we're just about ready to go to spring break, come back for four or five weeks, and we're going to detach again from our students for another two and a half months. So what we're going to be putting together, working with that group that's going to look down in on it and talk about gaffs and communication and how we can leverage resources and so forth, we're going to put together a plan for transitioning all of our students back into the school year next year. So this is an important, it is urgent, but it's not urgent like tomorrow as much as some of the other things about informational website stuff. We're going to be putting together a plan to transition our students and our staff back into school after two years of COVID, after a summer away from each other, and after the stresses that we're dealing with in our society. So that when we come back, we'll have things in place that could be a lot of like what you're talking about, Katie, where we're doing extra types of things to engage kids and to get them comfortable in their environment. So that's the kind of thing that we're going to be doing there. One of the things I put up here, Sarah, was based on what you just said. We do need over time to develop plans to review wellness programs and materials with members of the board in our community. What all do we have?
But we do, I mean, that's the packet that Kelly and Betsy worked on. I mean, they have the four cornerstones and everything, community parents, I mean, we have it all together.
Right, my comment is what I appreciated when you said, now we need to share that with people. We need to expand the knowledge of board.
Right.
So that was, that was my second one that I put in there. On the important and but not urgent, you see it, develop plans to review wellness programs and materials with members of the board. That all that, to share that out, and we'll use the website and the left side to do it.
We do have things on our website, it's finding it.
Right, that was Bob's point, get it up there so people can easily access it. The next one that I took from the list is reduce costs across the organization. Have all departments prepare a short and long-term cost avoidance plan to be shared with the superintendent. Review costs of third-party venues that we may not fully use. So what are we thinking on this one? Reducing the cost across the organization. Yes, to all of that. Where is the next one? So how does this change into an important, urgent, or to an important, not urgent? What would it look like in a plan? We sort of detailed the first one, and we've got a couple of things linked to it. I would say for clarity, we should take the update website link in blue, we should make that web writing blue.
When you say urgent, do you mean like tomorrow, or?
Urgent would be this year, this year.
Okay, all right, thank you. I feel like things are urgent, but it doesn't necessarily mean it can happen tomorrow, so.
Then, yes, because they're all related. And now everything that we discussed related to the second one is, is, okay? Let's move on to the next one. That seems like something we should be doing. Update and reorganize the website, we already talked about that. Develop standard operating procedures for booster organizations that raise money to purpose and distribution as well as transparency, to ensure donors can track their investment. Okay, so I think this one is probably going to be an important, not necessarily urgent. I'm following along. Develop standard operating procedures for booster organizations that raise money, purpose and distribution as well as transparency to ensure donors can track their investment. Anybody want to talk about this one, to elaborate more on the thought behind this one? Who's that doing with it?
I don't know.
I think it's a collection of ideas.
I think it would be nice to know, you know, what programs that they've raised money for as we're working together, just to see what's, what was raised and what was used for. Right now, I don't, there may be one, I don't know, but, you know, putting that down into a, you know, I don't even know if there's a standard operating procedure between us two or not. Maybe it does exist, maybe it doesn't, but putting something down like that would, you know, let everybody know what the expectations are for each.
So Alana, we have standard procedures for any monies that come into the school district and so forth and so.
There's maybe a terminology thing here because booster organizations like the Athletic Boosters and the PTAs, PTOs, we have outside booster organizations that aren't a part of the district's entity, and then we have inside groups like student activities and athletics and music groups that raise money. So there's two separate groups. Within the district, there are very clear guidelines as to how they raise money. They have to send in a form, a fundraising form, get it approved, the money is put and tracked and funded. A couple of the larger groups do share some of their fundraising information with us, and we could ask them to do a bit more. But the booster groups such as PTAs, PTOs, the Athletic Boosters, the really big booster groups, their money is separate, they are a separate entity, and it doesn't really flow through the district or its books. But certainly, what's being asked here is we could make sure, we could add maybe the fund numbers for where certain donations are within our own entity in fundraising. And this is something we definitely could work with the board to give you some idea, get you what we have, so you can see the procedures that we have now, and then take a look at those and see if you'd like to make some major changes to them.
What about the foundation?
Uh, the foundation does not really report anything to us or any sort of, oh, they don't really report where the donations come from to us. A lot of times, for example, if they give a teacher grant, we would put that in the principal's fund, what you see as 018 on your financial statements, and we would track how that was spent. But as far as knowing where the original donations, what people they came from, we wouldn't know that. We would only know that the donation came from the foundation. Does that make sense?
Yeah, do we know what programs that they're working on to raise funds for? Does that get communicated between the school district and the foundation, or how's that?
Yeah, I think Stacy works more with Scott and sometimes with Betsy and with Kim when she's actually raising the money. When the check comes, I'm given a list of what the program is for. The teacher or school that it is to be deposited into, and, you know, for STEM work or to buy library books. I'm given, I get a spreadsheet that has the amount we're given and what it was for, and the person receiving, the person or school that did you see in the grant is what I get.
So you do get that information, do you keep it?
Oh, absolutely, as backup to where we put the funds.
We do, from a curricular side, we also have, in conjunction with the foundation, developed rubrics to determine what's appropriate and not, so that whatever we do adopt is in line with what is already adopted as part of our work that we do here. So it's not something that's really not in line with our philosophy and what we believe in this district. And there's a panel, we'll make the principles within that panel to also give feedback on what should, should not be permitted.
So there's a lot happening, there's a lot happening in the district right now. If you were my age and you remember back in the day when you had these football games and you put all these men on there, and they went like this, and they just kept moving until pretty soon they all started to, well, that's kind of where we are right now. I don't think we need to apologize for the cumbersomeness of this meeting. It's one of the very first few that you guys have been in. We're trying to figure this out as we go along, we've got a lot of moving parts right now. The administration of the school district is trying to find out where the vision is, where the questions are, where the concerns are. So in this particular one here, what I'm hearing is, if individuals are going to be raising money on behalf of students in the school district, that they should be talking to the school in advance. Those dollars should be aligned with the strategic vision and the initiatives and vision that the board has set out in place, that the administration is supposed to be moving forward. So that when the money comes in, it is legitimately already decided to some extent, where that money will go and the rationale for that, as opposed to potentially raising money and then coming without having a clear vision. There's two things there. One, the administration has to do its job to ensure that we're planning and we can inform people what the, what the vision is. And two, they need to be mindful of, even though they are unbelievable supporters of the school district, they need to make sure that what they're raising money for and where they're contributing it is actually moving the district forward in its continuous approval plan in whatever area in which they are raising the dollars. That's probably not going to fit on that, but do I understand what you're thinking when you talk about groups that are connected with us? Okay, so the next one on there, Kim, is going to be develop standard website checkbook for transparency purposes. So there's a state checkbook that's out there. I know that Alana has already started down this road of getting that on the website. I don't know how long that takes, but the checkbook, Alana, can you explain to everybody what that's about? It's a concern of our board as far as I think.
Yeah, I think the Ohio Treasurer a few years back, maybe even decades, started a checkbook, and they accessed the district's financial statement, so to speak, and they put it on their website. That is, is one thing I know that the board brought up they'd like for us to participate in, and we are going to participate in that. Right now, we are in the process of implementing a new accounting system. The accounting system that we're currently on is no longer available at the end of this year, it is absolutely obsolete. So we are thick in the throes right now of converting all our accounting records to a new system. And it is on our timeline, the new system will be up and running July 1. And as soon as that is done, we are going to put the checkbook on the treasurer's website. And I will make sure that I get with them and get a time plan for how long it will be after July 1 until it's up and running.
Would you go on that one? The next one on our, on our document here is determine the need and date for a potential operating levy. So that will be as urgent and important as we make it through this conversation this evening and where you would like to place that on the chart. This would like to ask, you may have some questions about this, we've got some documents prepared if you want to review those, or you would like for our team to review those. But for a little bit of background, the levy that we had two years ago was a three-year levy. And that three-year levy, there was a promise that it would last three years. And if we were to fulfill that promise, we would put another operating levy on this November to start collecting money in the upcoming year. If we did not want to do that, then you can put the levy on any year following that. What everyone should know is, if you pass a levies in any month in a school, any month in a year, you do not collect that money until the next January. So if you pass a levy in January, you cannot collect that money until the next January, and there aren't many in January, so you don't have to worry about that. But if it's in the springtime, or in the summertime, or in the fall, those three times that we have available, you don't collect the money until the following year, the first January. So with situations like that, you have to take a look at the cash balance of the school district. And that sort of is a source, and more importantly, you need to watch your expenditures and your revenue. And in the state of Ohio, with a funding system that doesn't have an inflationary component to it in an inflationary time period of 7.5%, costs are going up quickly, and our income has been, stays the same. So those are factors that we need to consider, the board needs to consider when you think about resources for the school district. So it is important for us, the administrative team, to kind of find out where the Board of Education is because just for the purposes of this discussion.
I think that would tie in with the reduced cost across the organization, the second question, they would all tie in together.
Yes. This is, we talk about planning for the upcoming school year. These are things that are happening in the human resources world of the school district. And you will see that on March 16th, there's a Board of Education meeting, and on that meeting, during that meeting, you will be receiving resignations, individuals who are retiring, things like that. So you have a list of vacant positions, or vacant positions, that you would be approving that evening. If approved, then after the board acts, the typical thing is to then post those vacancies so that we can begin the process of acquiring qualified staff members to assume those positions. And so we don't want to post something if we're going to have a need to reduce our cost structure, if you can follow. So I'd like to maybe have Alana for a minute, show us the five-year forecast, and kind of talk about where we are and what that means relative to this. So. Which slide was it, Alana?
I think, too, this is a slide that we went over in the Finance Committee, and I did email the presentation to the rest of the board members. But this shows our current project forecast that was passed this past November. It shows revenues and expenditures continuing on as our past trends. And since this was done in November, it does not have the 7% increase in fuel prices that we're seeing. That was not forecasted at the time. So this is from November, and it was approved, it shows our cash balance. And as you can see, when we get to fiscal year '24, we start to dip down into the negatives. So we know that we can't let that happen. Somewhere, somewhere between now and '24, if we do not plan to put a levy on before fiscal year '24, we will need to make 4.8 million in cuts. So if you make them over two years, that's 2.4 million a year. If you make them just in the last year, that's 4.8. But that is what our current forecast shows. Now, of course, we know when we look at cost reductions and that we can make, and also the amount of the levy that you would go for, and when the cost reductions are made, what year they're made in, there are hundreds of scenarios that we could actually pull out and talk about. So we kind of talked about, we go on to the next one, and the Finance Committee, the next slide. Okay, that's under the next one. We talked about all of that. There we go. Okay, this is what we looked at, and again, this is what we looked at in the committee. And again, this doesn't have any cost reductions in it, and it shows that if we waited until fiscal year '23, or excuse me, calendar year '23 to put a levy on, which would not begin collections until fiscal year '24. collections until fiscal year '24, part of the, and I should back up a little, part of the problem in communication with this is levies are levied and collected on the basis of a calendar year. So like Scott said, it doesn't matter what election we would pass a levy, say in 2022, it would not be collected until January of '23. Well, January of '23 is right in the middle of our fiscal year '23. So our fiscal year '23 ends June 30. Property taxes are levied and collected twice a year, once in the spring, once in the fall. So we only get a half year of collection if the levies pass in '22. Fiscal year '23 only gets one-half years of collection because the full collection comes over the calendar year. So that's what gets a little confusing. So when you look at how it affects the cash balance, it only affects the one-half of collections in the first year of collection. So you only have a half a year of collections, only half the annual taxes are collected in the first fiscal year following it. This shows if we waited until calendar year '23, we would not begin any collections until our fiscal year '24. And this also assumes no reductions, and it shows the cash balance that would exist three years out, given this different levy scenario, ranging from a 5-mil levy to a 7.5-mil levy. This scenario is meant to show what will happen if we don't go until calendar year '23 and we make no cost reductions. Now, if we go to the very last slide here, next steps, and this is something that we were just talking about today. This has been updated today, so it wasn't talked about at the finance committee. But this is just to give you an example of what it does to the cash balance. Yeah, let's look at the numbers. This particular cash balance is showing what happens if we assume 1.3 million in permanent reductions beginning with our school year '22, '23, and we go for a levy in calendar year '23, first collection's '24. So this assumes 1.3 million in permanent reductions, so 1.3 million goes out of the budgets beginning in school year '22, '23, and stays out. So nothing added. And this is what happens to the cash balance here.
So Alana, if I hear this correctly, this chart is showing us that if we reduced $1.3 million, that would be, it would impact next school year, not this year, it would impact next school year. That with a 7.5-mil levy, if we put a levy on in '23, in 2026, we would have that cash balance, 21 million. If we reduce that down with 1.3 million dollars of reductions, we'd have $8 million in '26, which is just a bit under the 10% threshold of the board as in policy. And I, am I accurate for that?
Yes.
So are there other scenarios that...
Yeah, no one can...
So this is, I mean, 7.5 is an interesting number. So what else do we have?
And let's see...
This is 1.5 million.
Yeah, this is making 1.5 million. And this shows 1.5 million, what happens if the levy is passing calendar year '22, and then the bottom is showing what happens if the levy is passed in calendar year '23.
So if I'm looking at this and I see 4.7 mil is the lowest possible, with 1.5 million dollars taken out of next year, we would have seven, almost 720, probably have 700, excuse me, 7,229,000 at the end of '26. And then the other one is if we, that's if we put it on this November of '22. If we waited until next November, then the cash balance with the same scenario is going to be $116. So by waiting a year, it's $7 million, and the levy numbers will need to go up to be able to achieve that 7... The millage will have to go up to achieve that 7 million. So if you do it in '23, the millage goes up and the cash balance goes down by 7 million.
I think just the overall thing to realize, the sooner you make the cuts in terms of years, the higher the cash balance is, and the sooner you get to the core levy in terms of years, the higher the cash balance will be. I think that's a pretty simple concept. But I think the important thing is to take a look at what these reductions are and what the services and programs that that will take out of the school district, task, when people leave, who will perform those tasks, things like that. So, you know, that's the real thing in all of this, and I know that Rob's going to talk about that either at his next human resource committee meeting or when we get to look at what those reductions actually are. Because as we look at our budget, a good 85% of it is in salaries and benefits, and that's about the only place to get this high of a reduction, it will have to include some of that. So I don't know, I didn't mean to take over the meeting, which was meant to be on board priorities, but...
It's your first session. Uh, Scott and Alana.
And Rob. Um, so what I would like to see when we go through this, and I think it sounds like you're going to be able to share this with us, is not just necessarily the figure, I want to know exactly how many teachers we're going to have to cut. I want to know if transportation is going to get cut, because we all know that is the first thing that tends to go in situations like this. So is transportation getting cut across the board? What percentage, or is it a percentage of transportation? What do class sizes then look like at various grade levels? Because we're going to have to eliminate teachers, essentially. School psychologists, occupational therapists, are those going? What does that look like? How, like, I want to see an actual figure, because that's what's going to matter to the people in this room and in our community. The people that have kids in the district are going to feel that. And I, I need to be able to conceptualize what 4.8 million dollars in cuts looks like. The pool, I'm assuming that's out the window. I would just guess. Extracurriculars, sports, are we going to move to pay-to-play, which causes other problems? Like, I want to hear all of that and see all of that, like, the good, the bad, the ugly, because that's the reality of what that's going to look like, so.
So there's a few scenarios up there, back to the cash balance, back to the expenditures versus the revenue. Regardless of what we reduce, we have a levy in our future. The question is, how far in the distant future, near or distant future, do we want that levy to be put on? I can tell you that over the past three years, we, prior to the levy, we reduced 1.5 million dollars. After the levy, we had an attritionary reduction of 750,000 additional dollars. So this time around, if we are going to be eliminating 1, 1.5, whatever it might be, we've pretty much cut the paperclips in the paper and the copiers. We've refined our service contracts. Our bus transportation department runs at $5.01 per mile, and the average in the area is eight cents per mile. We are efficient, we are on the CUP report, and with all these metrics, our school district is either in the middle or to the lower side, which is a positive thing for efficiencies. So to your point, if that's a direction that we have to go, given the circumstances of our budget, 1.5 million dollars is going to be people and it's going to be program. It's not going to be paperclips anymore. It's not going to be changing the tires when we get new buses to the back because we already do that. It's going to be programs and people, because that's 85% of our budget. And that is not meant to be argumentative, that is the reality of where our district stands at this point. So Rob, so, Rob, what is, what is the average cost per staff member with all the benefits included if you are a certified teacher in our school year?
For this purposes, we'd be looking at about $89,000 all in, includes all benefits. And that's not the average for the district, because the average isn't, who would be reduced? The average would be higher than that, but when it comes to making reductions, we're looking at a RIF situation. And so we're looking at, you know, first licensure, and then evaluation status, and then seniority and this work. And so based on the negotiated contract with the teachers' association, that salary schedule would be taken into consideration. We kind of figure maybe a five-year type teacher-ish as the base model for the figures. So I don't know if that answers your question, Mr. Trevels, but... And then obviously, it's the, you know, depending on the 1.3, 1.5, if it's no levy in '23, Alana has 2.4 over two years. So there's just a variety of factors, and so that's where, I know Scott had referenced the, you know, the staffing season and those kinds of things. And the only thing that I would add to that is it's about this time of the year that we like to get ahead of the hiring season so that, you know, we can get the top quality candidates and stay competitive in the job market. And it's also helping our principals really chomp at the bit and get to those career fairs and stuff like that. So that's kind of the urgency of the matter, and, but what Scott, what Scott said that I want to add to is the fact that every year, as we're looking at, you know, course requests and enrollment and that kind of things, there's not going to be, like, the posting just to post. We always look at every, you know, every retirement, every resignation, and we see, you know, what that's going to do in terms of whether it's a, you know, if it's in a certain program and the course requests are high and kids are requesting that course and, you know, it gets run. If the course request gets really low, then we always keep those into consideration, regardless of the levy cycle, I guess is the only thing that I would say. I'm just kind of speaking to try and maintain some of those efficiencies that you had mentioned.
What is the date that we would have to notify teachers if we had a RIF?
Well, I mean, it, in that sense, you know, the sooner the better. Typically speaking, under the contract, you know, we are obligated to notify teachers of their anticipated assignment by the end of the school year. And there is a caveat that that assignment may change, depending upon enrollment fluctuations and those kinds of things. And then depending on how late that is, you know, there's some stipulations as to how early, you know, we might need to give some time for them to get prepared if they're picking up a new section and teaching something that they weren't thinking about, you know, during the summer months. So if we get down that, we have to get down that path, I mean, it's, it is very much advised that the sooner the better, just, you know, also because we want to help our folks, you know, who we're, you know, speaking about, get ahead of the job market as well. Everybody's clamoring to fill vacancies in the March-April timeframe. If you're pushing May and into June, it's not really where you want to be, certainly in the summer. And some of that happens every year, it's just, it's the rarity, and that's not where we want to be.
So people will also ask, you know, what's the average cost for administrators in this district? The average cost for administrators is about $149,000 all in, everything included. And people will say, well, I'd like to find out who the administrators are in buildings and how much they get paid. And so why does Mago Mills, why does X Elementary's Administration, why are we spending so much more there than we are in another building? Well, it's because that administrator might be there for 27 years or might have that type of experience. So when people ask us to do all of these things and to go through all of this and look at it, there's a whole backstory to who are the people in those positions, what is their level of experience, all that sort of thing. So it's very hard to have $50 spent in every building on the same thing. It's dependent upon student needs, it's depending upon staffing, certification, expertise, years of service. So some of the things individuals will ask us to do is put all kind of charts together and all kind of information for them to be able to review all of that and dig into that. Yes to all of that. We do that every day. We do that every day, all day. Where we should be looking is places like the Ohio Department of Education metrics, where we are measured up against light districts. We should be going to the CUP report in the state of Ohio. That is a third-party agency that talks about your expenditures relative to other school district's expenditures. And so where we want the board to be in that planning is, look, if this is what our budget is, if we're spending X percent on administrators, X percent on transportation, X percent on whatever, the goal for us to be working with you on is, what percentage would you like us to spend in those areas relative to the comparison districts and the performance that they have? Because if we get way down into the third-grade teacher who has this certification at Maddox Elementary with board members, that's going to be very difficult to be able to do what Rob is talking about for eight, nine, 10 hours a day, stuck in that office doing that. Very difficult. So what we need from you is decision, date, expectations. Levy, no levy. Time period, when do you want to have that happen? What are your expectations for the costs in administration, transportation, food service, whatever it might be, curriculum? Take a look at that and set the course for us. And we go back and we look at our contracts, we look at the best situations we can to move people, move programs, refine things. Because you may want to go someplace that would require us, in a strategical way, to take advantage of two or three retirements we see coming and shift people around and take advantage of that over a longer period of time. That way, we are, we are growing new people to take those positions, we have time for our principals to be able to change schedules, programming, options available to students during that same time period. And it is a strategical, planned, understood, clear plan that's out there that anybody who's involved can see, this is where we're going. It will be difficult at times, challenging at times, but it should not be a surprise to anyone. That's the direction that we want to go. So not today, or we're going to have a levy next week or next year, but very soon, we need to know kind of what you're thinking so that we can begin to do the work that I know you want us to do, which is investigate places where we can be efficient. If we're going to push a levy off a year or whatever the determination is, we're going to need to know, because elementary class sizes, new people moving into the district, you know, we have more preschool students signed up next year than we've had in a while, so those numbers are going up. So there's a lot that has to take place here. So that's, that, we need to get to a place in time on this, on this resource discussion. And yet, it might not be tonight. But on March 16th, we're going to be moving forward with postings. And we want to make sure that we're mindful about that. And if some of that's not going to happen, then we need to be thinking about that and be working with our principals on that.
So 4.8 mil is approximately 5% of our budget, right? That's what we said in the finance committee meeting.
We need to, if we had no levy, you'd have to cut 4.8%, excuse me, 4.8 million to be able to push the levy one year. One year.
Without the year.
So how long would it take to get those figures together, just to see them?
Staffing wise, like, it really just depends on the scenarios, and we can work up, I can have the numbers to use soon.
Okay.
I might just want to make sure that everything is...
Sure.
The way that you would like to see it, but, you know, if it's this November, you know, okay, what that means, and then what the millage might be, if it's fiscal year '23, and then what the millage would be. And what I would be giving you would be options for you... And what I would be giving you would be options for you to consider. Not necessarily anything that would be, you know, when we're talking about averages, that's what they are. They're averages and so it's what the targets would be. But soon, I, I mean, by the end of the week, I can get you the numbers if that's acceptable to you.
Scott, if you had to give us a deadline for when we're cleaning a levy on or if the majority decides never in their tenure here, when do you need to hear that from everyone up here? Like, what deadline?
I think that's probably a better question for you now. I'm not, I'm not just pushing the
Right. Oh, the filing deadline is you have to file with the county auditor who certifies your levy calculations. That has to be a hundred days prior to the election date, which is usually somewhere late July. And then within ninety days prior to the election, you have to file with the county board of elections for it to be put on the ballot. And that's typically sometime the end of the first week in August. And I can get those actual dates for you.
So that's, that's if we were to put one on this November, right?
Yes.
So when do you need to know how this board is feeling with regard to, maybe they say no on this, this round and then the next, like, how soon do you need to know what the actual truthful expectation is here so that y'all can start actually putting together these cuts and to show us, all right, well, you know, soccer's going, swimming's going, whatever.
Typically, as most of the people in the room know, because they've all held a board sign of some type for the school district regarding a levy or whatever, that's about a six-month process. It's more than that, but it's six months of intensifying from the six-month out every month going forward. Tremendous amount of communication, organization needs to take place. Say like ground troops, for lack of a better term, who are going to be helping with that. That's about a six-month process. So if you're looking at something this November, we're getting close to some type of a decision. If we're looking at something next year, it's very important for us to know pretty soon so that we don't get ourselves in a staffing situation that can't, that doesn't allow us to minimize some of our expenses in the coming school year. And we'd want to do that, or we want to do that earlier than later for this reason. I'm in my third grade, seventh grade, tenth grade class, I'm rolling alone and, and all of a sudden on May twenty-seventh, Rob comes to my room and says, we've come up with a decision and we want, we, we have unbelievable teachers. So if, if for some reason, economic circumstance or whatever, we are reducing administrators or teachers, we shouldn't just be talking about teachers, administrators or teachers, we should be giving them enough time to be able to get materials together and to be able to access employment someplace else. And we should be helping them transition. So if we know that earlier, we're signing paperwork. Rob Fellows is a great fifth-grade teacher. I see you have an opening. You need to get Rob in your, in your pool of candidates for that position. That's the type of stuff that we want to be doing. So I'm, you know, it's, it's that type of work that we need to be doing.
So can I add something? On top of seeing how these cuts would impact like the classroom, how does it also impact the roofs that are leaking or the track at Nagel or parking lots that need paved? Like, I'd like to see a broader understanding of exactly how everything's impacted.
I'm going to get right there, Katie. Here we go. No one is more technology challenged in this room than Scott Rupp.
He has grown so much.
I still have an F minus.
Like a three-way call one day and I'm my line.
Age is a terrible thing. So Mr. Eckert, a couple of weeks, a week ago, went over the facilities in the school district. And we pulled, thinking this might be ass, we pulled on some, I know you guys. We pulled a couple of slides and to your point, Katie, this slide talks about the additional eighty-seven thousand square feet we've added in our school district. That we won't talk about at this moment, but the current projects, John, do I need to push on?
Well, that'd be the, that'd be the sports.
Am I looking at this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are for next year's projects.
This is eight-hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars that's been identified in our permanent improvement plan?
Yes.
How much money is available for that?
Uh, three hundred and eight, a little under four hundred thousand.
When it says fundraise for the restroom remodel, when I'll say. That means, does that mean that we're not paying for that, it's, there's a fundraiser for this?
Correct. Correct. And this particular project, that was, that was on the plan to be done for next year. And Turpin Boosters chose to spend their money, help us out with that program. So they, they cut out twenty-seven thousand dollars out of our budget, which was, you know, everything else, so that's huge. The PI programs, that's what comes out of the permanent improvement fund. If you just add up the permanent improvement fund, we're already past what, what is available. And then the other facility items that we have in there, we pull out a general fund. But Atlanta can speak, you know, cleaner to the general fund dollars, but we don't have the money. We do not have eight hundred thousand dollars.
Remember how much in the fuel budget because of the fuel pricing right now? A hundred and fifty thousand, you're saying?
At lea-, at least. We've, we've gone up. It's, it's gone up over a dollar a gallon in the past. You know, it's, it's getting rough. We, a couple of weeks ago, before everything started going crazy, we needed roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get the propane through the year and we thought it would be okay. But that, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars isn't touching it now.
But I don't even see, I see roof replacement online.
Yeah, the roof replacements are weird.
Is the track not?
That's on this year's project.
Okay, so, oh, so these are just next year's?
Yeah, our current projects, what we're doing, we, we did our bid openings today. We still got plenty of work to go through, but
Does our budget already show that's being taken?
Yes, that's already accounted for. The projects of this year's monies have already been accounted for.
But not next year's.
Correct.
And what we're looking at right now are next fiscal years. And these are, this slide was meant to just demonstrate the need, not necessarily demonstrate what we could come up with.
I went up to Nagel on Saturday and looked at.
Are we not able to sell advertising space on that scoreboard to raise money for the track?
The athletic department does look to sell advertisement. Nagel's not a big draw for advertising dollars, to be honest. If you see, we have more signs and stuff at the high school facilities because we get thousands of people there. Now, we might get five hundred crazy kids running that track every day, but they're not the ones going out and buying cars and
So we've tried, just nobody's done it?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, and I mean, even with the large, the, what we charge to be competitive, the athletic directors have worked on this for a number of years to be competitive and we don't price ourselves out. The dollars were given, but it's still not by the track. So does that help you a little bit with this? And like Atlanta said, and this real quick, this is what we say we need. It's not what we have. I'm not going to get all those projects done next year. And then again, the decisions that we're, we're looking for and the direction we're looking for is once we come up with a dollar figure, then I will whittle down the highest level priorities of these. And okay, you know, like you were saying, a roof. And say we can only afford one roof, we're going to find the worst roof and fix that roof first.
Do you have an idea of what projects will be needed in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
Do you have a list?
We've got them for about the next
I thought he was talking about that. I didn't know if it was complete.
Yes. We've got, especially the roofs and asphalt were good for about the next eight, nine years of priority levels. You know, and it's like right now, the way life stands, if we can only afford one roof right now, it is going to be the Anderson area roof one. So, and that's, that would be now. There's the
Like, Air is not even on this list.
No.
I know that they had
Every roof.
And Turpin too. I know.
Every roof in the district.
I've just seen trash cans sitting there collecting water.
And you are a hundred percent correct with that. And that, the only thing I'd like to say, the craziest thing is a flat roof. It makes so much sense. You create a pool on top of the building, you know, but that's just the way that it's designed. So every roof's going to have some, some issues. But these are where the proofing experts come in and prioritize for us.
So I think, I'm talking to the board, a lot of people in this room, talking to the board. What's happening in this room right now is a reality of funding in this state. This is why for four years I've been driving to Columbus, once a month, to fight the senators and legislators about the funding component in this state, the funding model in this state. It does not have an inflationary component in it. Over the time of my career, we went from about sixty percent of assistance in, in certain areas down to, I won't get into all that because it's a long speech, but here's the thing. Without an inflationary component, all reliance is on local businesses and local community tax or homeowners. And in our community, unlike others in the area, we don't have a lot of business. And in our community, in our school, like some in other areas, we have a bigger footprint. We're serving seven thousand seven hundred kids and we're doing it in nine facilities. So we have a large footprint and we love the community school experience and we love that neighborhood school experience. And we enjoy and respect and admire these two unbelievably successful high schools. We have a lot of property that we are covering. So righting the ship, how could the pools get the way they are? How could the roofs get the way, how could we possibly? Because boards before you have been faced with this very same dilemma. Seven point five mils is not acceptable in our community. It's not. Well, what are we going to do? We bought buses three years ago and we put in our budgets that we're going to buy five a year. How many are we planning for next year? Three. So we're already, just two years after we made that decision, not fulfilling that obligation. And how did we get to that? The Ohio State Patrol came in and said, these are buses you are not permitted to run. So we had to go buy buses because it was urgent and it was important. But because of the funding model, not because of good people who sit on the board or who pay taxes, not because of us, these decisions have to be made and you prioritize based on what you have in the moment. In the moment, looking back is easy to do, but in the moment, we're faced with that. Kitty's got six hundred thousand dollars worth of curriculum revisions that are due next year. We've got increasing inflationary costs with gasoline and other things. We have a cash balance that we all knew is naturally going down. And we have a funding model in the state of Ohio that was approved last year that they may not fully fund over the next four years. So nothing, not nothing, many things are working against us. So what happens in school districts, unfortunately, but the reality is here in many places, you go right up to the cliff and you tell your community, if we can't pass the levy, we're going to cut all of this stuff. So how do we right the ship? How do we truly get to a place where our community is satisfied with us fiscally and with fiscal responsibility and not get ourselves to the cliff and be able to maintain all of the things that we've been talking about and all the ways that you've been conversing with me and I appreciate it, I really do. All the good thought and the good ideas that you bring. How, how do we get there? How are we going to do this? If it was me, I don't want to raise taxes. I'd have a levy on this November. I'd push that thing down to four point seven. I'd, I'd make reasonable reductions and I would get myself in a place where I had three years to answer the bigger question. The righting of the ship, the platform, the programs that we have in place. Three years to work with our community and check off boxes that we are fiscally responsible and we are making the right decisions and we are moving forward. Three years to prepare people for a potential change in what they expect right now might be out there. Otherwise, we're going to ask them for seven point five mils, increase their taxes and reduce their programming. There's no other option. So how do we do that? And one of the things on here is a business advisory council that we're talking about. People who work with us to help us communicate that, to help us craft that, to help us take a closer look at what we're doing and give us points of emphasis and ways to shore up on gaps. The bottom line is, we're going to need to put something together. If we're going to solve this problem, and this has no reflection on any board member that's ever been here in the past, we're going to have to do something dramatically different than what we've done over the last three decades. Because the funding model in the state doesn't support it. And our local taxpayers deserve to be able to look out more than two or three years, if it's possible, to kind of see what's coming and be able to deal with it. So I'm not suggesting that we eliminate anything. What I am suggesting is, the funding model doesn't work. It's not your fault. It's not the taxpayer's fault, but it is the reality of our community and schools in Ohio. So that's my sort of fifty-thousand-foot view of all this. To, to really make a difference, we're going to have to talk beyond one point three million dollars worth of productions into million-dollar plans with benchmarks and metrics in place that guide us in a direction where our community is alongside and holding us accountable to what we say we're going to do and, and landing that plane, so to speak, on the other runway that we made it. This is our moment in time, or we're going to be coming back every four, three, four years with a levy. And if we do have to come back every three or four years with a levy, it should be a smaller levy because it's close to the inflationary things that we're dealing with in our economy and not excessive to what we see in inflation. So that's my thought on this. And we're not going to get there tonight, but if we wait another year, which is the decision of the board, we're going to increase the millage and we're going to increase the cuts. And we're going to decrease our cash balance. All things that will not permit the fixing of a pool, will not help us build a roof somewhere, will not help us ensure all those other things are in place. It's, it's, it's a tough moment for us, but it's a challenge I think we can overcome. So we're going to give you for this, we're going to, we're going to start to put together some models. Give that to our board of education. And they're going to come with no names. They're not going to come with, it's, it's going to be because that's not fair to people whose name may be there. There's a lot of work that has to take place with something like that. Nope, they'll be done now. Add Rob, John. Think I'm going to disappoint at the elections. Another priority is business advisory needs to be implemented. That's probably an important, urgent. Or I don't know that it's urgent, but it's an important factor. Next one on there, Kim. Forensic audit, maybe. Oh, I'm sorry. The state of the pools is tragic. What is the plan to arrest it? Pools. We have estimate after estimate after estimate. And given the fact that gasoline went from three thirty-nine to four oh nine in a week, And given the fact that gasoline went from 3.39 to 4.09 in a week, I think the estimates are probably not accurate. And so the plan with the pool, I don't, I don't know the direction that you want us to go in that. I know you've been digging in. I know you've been looking at it hard. You've been, you viewed the pool. You've asked us to look for additional vendors, additional cost reduction options, all of that. This could be the one where it's, it's an important, I don't want to say it's not urgent because I don't want to offend anyone. It's, it's extremely important, but is there a, a longer plan that maybe we include tools with community fundraising or some other investment-type arrangement where we're working with another organization to try to raise dollars? Sometimes that's done through an agreement similar to what you might see in other school districts that are close to us where they become part of our organization or we share facilities in some way and they're, and they're helping. We have a pretty good example in-house of Seven Hills. Who provides a very nice budget or who provided very nice equipment to our auditorium and provides us with a budget to ensure that anything, tightest hall that needs to be repaired along the way is taken care of. So arrangements like that make a lot of sense. And so there's some things we can do there. We are working with the Economic Development Committee in Anderson Township. We do have a meeting coming up with our Parks District again in our township and we'll continue to organize there to see if there are some opportunities on that. We've been working on this one for a while. With all the figures that we've talked about, that pool is in the neighborhood of $2 million and probably upwards of that when you really think about the extensive nature of that project. So.
Is this in the right place?
What is the status of the economic development, you know, any pool studies that they look at locations to plan? If we were to do like a moron?
The Economic Development Committee meeting, its president is here, so she might speak to it, but Amy. They, over two years, when I, when we very first started, we were looking at property sites. We actually met with the YMCA. We met with some other groups around. Is there a way to, to kind of consolidate what we're doing, what the Y's doing, what the, what the Parks are doing? Is there some way to, to do that? What we struggled with was a location to build a brand-new pool. And part of the YMCA's planning was to do something more significant on the property on Clough. But there are some significant traffic issues related to something like that as well as the amount of property able to handle a pool that has that type of a possibility for competition. From there, we had conversations with, what's the park? I'm sorry, I can't think of it right now. Coney Island. We had some conversations with Coney Island and, and those I think are still in play. So.
That's true. I'll, I'll add on.
Yeah.
Kellogg, there's some opportunity there. Now with the Kellogg Entertainment District coming to me over, I don't know if that's coming to the backseat. Our next meeting is the 22nd. So Julie Disinder is really a great contract for this as well, but she kind of headed up the pool piece of it. I know the township has looked at a bunch of things with the YMCA as well, but we're still landlocked in a lot of areas. But I think that there was some, pre-pandemic, there was public interest in private donors and they kind of went away. So we kind of really need to re-engage those people and see if there's opportunity to pull this back up. But I think location now, because Kellogg, I think, at least on our side of Kellogg, township-owned property of Kellogg is probably out of the question.
We, at West Claremont, made a good deal with Mercy Hospital. I mean, we have a healthcare provider, you know, touching one of our campuses, our high school campuses. Have we explored Christ or anything like that? See if they would be interested in a partnership?
Actually, the West, um, actually, West Claremont's agreement with Mercy is for Navy grades only. West Claremont actually owns the health flex and the pool. And they pay, um, a management company. Who at the time when West Claremont hired them, also is the one that ran Mercy Health. Mercy Health does own their own health flexes. They have a management company run them. And so I think one of, how we went through that process though, it's a little bit different situation than where we sit here in Forest Hills. We actually had a feasibility study done because the area itself did not have any pools within West Claremont besides a few that were in neighborhoods, neighborhood associations. So there really was no pool in the area. So the feasibility study that we had showed that a health flex would be very, would be needed and, and would be used. And in fact, it did turn out that way. The purpose we did that is when new high schools are being built, schools are now looking for ways to bring the community into the high school. So it was kind of done not only so our, uh, West Claremont students would have a pool. They used to rep, uh, Turpin Anderson pools. But not only that, but also as a way of bringing the community into the school. So it's a little bit different, but the feasibility study was kind of done. And I think too that when we talk about the future and really get beyond where we are today, that might be one of the things we want to start to look at when we look at shared facilities. What is that our community is missing in terms of serving its, its residents? And I think that in brainstorming with the facilities committee at one time, we came up with, Rob, what was it, batting cages? I don't have young kids anymore, so it's.
Yeah, a barn with indoor turf and indoor training.
I think of town country.
So when, when we look towards the, the future, I think we need to be looking at what our community is missing and how, how do we fill that hole and not replicate, you know, what someone else has done that may not be what our community needs. Does that make sense? That's.
So we've not talked to Christ at all?
No.
Amy, do you know if there's been any conversations with Christ right there by Anderson?
Not nowhere, no.
So that's a, they're close. There's a, there's property right in that area that might be advantageous for both of us.
Is that something we can explore with this business advisory committee or is that something with economic development? I mean, we contacted Julie Disinder. But I just hate that the pool just keeps, we don't, we talk about it, but nobody does anything about it. I mean, we need to make a decision, you know, I, I would like to. There's some kind of plan or options or something.
Yes.
Well, I guess we had plans, right? I mean, in the last board essentially decided we needed to explore further outside resources. Really Elizabeth would be the one to speak about it more, or Julie. And that was, that was the plan, to find something long-term. And our decision was to not plop down $2 million when no one could really tell us if that was really, really going to fix the problem with the pool and knowing that we had the Turpin pool, you know, not far behind it. So that, I, I mean, I would say, wouldn't you say, like, that was essentially what the previous board had landed on? Was to continue exploring those external options because we weren't willing to write a $2 million check. Or we couldn't. It's not, I mean, it's not that we don't want to. We couldn't. We still can. I guess, I don't know, on one vote. Four can decide differently. But we could not write that, we felt. So that was, that's where it's at. And now, you know, it's here. Continue down that path or, or find another creative solution.
So I don't have an answer for this one because I don't have. I've, I've been going to the Economic Development Committee meetings for years. And township and the schools have a great relationship. And even being permitted to participate in Economic Development Committee, I think is great. I'm appreciative of that. There are, there are common goals, but there are important things that the township is working on as, as far as the gaslight district down on Kellogg, trying to have the corridor opening up. There are land issues with something of this size. There are revenue issues. And a pool is, you know, a new pool is about $15 million when you have everything that's there. And so that was, that has been a problem for a while. And given the circumstances with the building project and trying to get everything accomplished and everything done, putting money towards the pool didn't seem at the time, or we didn't think that that would be the best use of dollars given some of the things we talked about tonight. Again, we're making decisions in a moment. The 45 years that led to that moment, they weren't around for all of that. But they were dealing with their moment in time, given the fact that the pool was destabilized at this particular point. So. And there's evidence that along the way, that pool has, has had updates and, what was it, maintenance along the way. So it's, it's 60-some years of age. It's, it's, its life is over. So these, they're probably just going to be replaced. We will continue to seek opportunities to address that issue. I just don't know what they are today. And more importantly, while we're on the downside, we have to continue to do everything we can to keep that program robust, to minimize the inconveniences that our students are experiencing and their families are experiencing. Take advantage of the pools that we have and be able to provide them with the best we possibly can, given the circumstances. And to do that, we engage our athletic directors with our coaches and our parents to try to make up whatever works best for them, given where we are. And we will continue to do that. I'm often reminded by Tony Hemelgarner in this particular conversation that for years, Turpin played football at Anderson because he didn't have a football team. And there was a time when there was no auditorium at Turpin, when they were doing plays at Anderson. And there was, there've been times in our district's history where these things have happened until we can get ourselves on more solid ground. And I think, again, that righting the ship comment regarding facilities is kind of this discussion. I, I, that's my, my. But I appreciate his concern, Tony Hemelgarner. I really do. Next one on that list that is, it's a sports medicine contract. This is an urgent, important. Sports medicine contract is our athletes, our athletes who have trainers brought to us by Mercy. We are in the process of, um, we've put together, is it an RFP, John?
RFP, yes.
It is an RFP. There's two, there's two ways to do this.
Yeah.
Make sure he's right terminal. So the RFP, we're ready to send that out. We set the contract, uh, it was developed by our athletic directors and John and other folks to take a look at the former Mercy contract that we have. They've been a great partner with us. It's a 10-year contract. I think we're looking at a smaller length contract. And we're talking about other things kind of like this involved in that contract. And trying to increase the resources that are coming to us from our partners. Not gouge, but certainly bring the contract into the, the new decade as the Seven Hills contract. There's some things that we see there that we should be putting in a contract like this where it truly is a partnership. And we have a great partnership with Mercy. The date on the contract is working against us. We need to get that to be more modern. And that's what we're going to be doing there. So actually, if I could ask for your, this might be one we can absolutely, if I can ask for your approval with all of that information that's been provided, to go ahead and send that thing out, then we can start getting organizations that have interest in partnering with us in our training program to come in. And this is one of those things where it's not a bid process. So as we begin to develop relationships and we're talking with maybe one or two competitors here, that's when John and others can sit down and talk about nuances of the contract and try to continue to develop the best thing for our students and still be good partners with those that finally sign with us. But it's not a situation where we have a bid and it follows a process like that. This is truly a negotiation like the Seven Hills project was. So we will not, and, and there's a, there is a process in place. We will not go sign anything or do anything without our board totally reviewing everything. And so know that that won't happen, but we need to continue moving and continue to refine those individuals who have interest in partnering down to, you know, an application process. John?
Yeah, if I could add to that, basically what, I've been sitting here running numbers because if you remember, and you told me you had the highlight dates so that you put it out, give them this much time to respond. If, just to throw dates out, if we could put this out on the street next Monday, then my goal would be to have a, a solid contract for the board to act on in the April 4th meeting, at the April 4th meeting. That will give us plenty of time to grab the vendors, negotiate with the ones that are in, in the running and fine-tune it and then we could get legal and do all their stuff. Present a contract for the board on the 20th. You guys are good with that? I believe that's it. I believe that's to do with that.
Okay. Good? Okay. And you keep moving. Next one is, there were a lot of financial ones that are on there. Financial controls and segregate duties. Segregate duties for submitting, approving, dispensing, reconciling and auditing. Authorization for spending thresholds are needed beyond those approved for the superintendent treasurer. So superintendent treasurer, for those who don't know, every year the board of education allows, and I have business in between meetings, which allows us to purchase things up to a threshold that is approved by the board. So we can't exceed that. That's by a higher revised code. They've done that. The, the point here, I think, is, are we doing that across the board with all of our administrators and directors and people in positions? Are we, are we making sure that we're all working within thresholds and understanding? And most of that, we come through John's office in business if it has to do with purchasing and certainly if it's investments or it's anything that's capital improvement or anything like that. Atlanta is going to be involved in those types of things.
I think two steps on my.
Yes, go ahead.
When we talk about financial controls, the district has a really robust internal controls system. And as part of our audit, the state auditor also combines on the internal control system. And there have been no recommendations for improved improvement. We got a clean opinion, which is like the best you can get. I know it doesn't sound, it's accountant. It doesn't sound like superb or anything like that. Clean is as good as it gets. But we did with no recommendations for improvements in that. We're always reviewing, but the reason we get that is every year we update things. We make sure that there are segregations in duties as far as we can with limited staff, keeping in mind costs versus benefits of internal controls and things like that. So we do have a, like I said, and that's one of the reasons we do get the understate award every year, is that we do have the clean audit. So I'd be happy to, to go in more detail. I know we're running kind of late. If, if people want to sit down and have a discussion of, you know, who in my office, we actually are segregated. The person who writes checks is segregated from the person who has the right to approve those and also who receives the money. All, all of the segregations exist. We do not have internal auditing personnel within the district. All of our audits are done by outside auditors. So we just don't have the personnel for that. But I'd be happy to, to go over that a little bit more and talk again a little bit more detail about that.
And those are my questions and they're kind of out of context because these are priorities, but all of those answers were from like that financial question you asked, so it's not priority. So I was confused why those were even listed on here. So.
I tried to list everything to the same.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, obviously, yeah, I would like to know that stuff, but that's not like, yeah, sorry.
There's no wrong answer here. It's a question we need to.
Sounds like an agenda for a caucus committee meeting.
So the next one should, this, for everybody in this room, just, this has a question mark at the end. It is not a statement. And it is, should the district consider redistricting and/or consolidation plan? That's a question. It is not a dictate. So that's something that came up. We've had some discussions about that earlier this evening and, and all that sort of thing. I guess what we're talking about there is continued review of our budgets and our forecasts and levies and so forth and so on. And does that type of integration make sense? And you all need to talk about that more than I do. So if there's comments on this particular question that is on this, let's talk about it. So if there's comments on this particular question that is on this, let's talk about it.
Well, I mean, like redistricting, we relook at our bus routes how often, to make sure they're efficient? When's the last time we looked at? Twice a day.
I'll set that humorously, but that is true. Richard looks at everything every day, plus rep. Bus routes and stuff change. I think you guys were the ones who were at the, to give the update in bus stops, your first meeting? Were you guys at it, or was it your last meeting?
I don't think so.
But yeah, there are times when we have to update bus routes, bus stops.
Okay.
You know, the flux doesn't happen real well, but the efficiency and the merging, the elementary parents have been seeing a lot of the merging of routes and stuff like that.
I'm, I'm going to give him a huge shout out here. Richard Porter has a software over there that does this work, and Richard Porter is, can do it more efficiently than the software is able to do. Now, Richard has already contacted this Bob, and he's working with John. We're looking at ways to consolidate a few more things in the upcoming year. Part of our issue, as you all know, is that we, we start our day with seven substitutes in those positions. We start our day with seven subs, because we don't have enough hired employees to be able to run all the routes that we have. So Richard is trying to minimize that sub pool and take advantage of employees. The other thing we're doing, I'm involved with Hamilton County, and we're talking with legislators in the state of Ohio. Again, we don't want to reduce the safety, but we're talking with superintendents out of Hamilton County up to Columbus. I have a call last week, and we have no one coming up. We're going to meet with Senator Blessing. He's in charge of the Senate, he's the Speaker of the Senate, to, to, send a finance group, to have requirements for bus drivers in Ohio mirror those of Indiana, Kentucky, and other states that are connected to ours, continues to ours, because we're finding that Ohio has real, a whole different set of standards for bus drivers. It's my sense, which take a longer period of time, and people sort of fall out of that three, or four, or five-week transitional period. So we're going to kind of reduce that a little bit, and so we're doing that. And we'll continue to do that work legislatively in the state to try to increase the employment of folks. So that's one thing we do. And we, we do, we're looking at those routes weekly. We continue to do that. The next one says align K through twelve curriculum to ensure schools require similar instructional and learning experiences. I don't know that we need to talk about this one a lot, but we have talked about alignment, and pacing, and curriculum, and activities that are consistent among our elementary schools, as well as our two high schools with selections and options available to those students. So yes to all of that. We're in English Language Arts Division right now, curriculum. Going through that curriculum, we are taking a look at everything in there. We're also taking a look at verbiage, and materials, and things that might be argumentative, or that might be, aren't what we would like to have in our local curriculum, as we're going through that. And some of that is related to SEL, which is social emotional learning. So we're taking a look at that, making sure that that's aligned with the district's strategic vision, and all the things related to that, the materials, the selections, it's all part of the process. For English Language Arts teachers, we're working on that right now, and we will continue to do those things as we go through science and math in the upcoming years. So we're doing that. That one is urgent, important, not urgent, important.
Important and urgent.
Okay.
I'd say important and urgent, but I feel like, well, she's gone. We've talked about some stuff, and we're already currently working on getting things more in place, and there was already like a plan in place. I feel like it's already currently in the works.
Good.
So. It's already happening. I mean, it's urgent, important, and we're already have the ball rolling in that area.
Any thoughts on the curriculum, or on anything else that I just mentioned? The next one is review the level of SEL inclusion in all district curriculum and vision. So. I don't know how to respond to that in this meeting right now, but I think that we're going to have to be making sure that our curriculum is aligned with the district's strategic vision, that we are vetting very closely the materials that are available for our students, that our teachers have the professional development, and how to handle instruction in classrooms, to be sure that what they're doing is aligned with the district's strategic vision. And if the components of the vision are going to change, then this could be a strategic vision rewrite, as opposed to detailed review before we have the directional, the direction that we want to go with this particular item.
Scott, just for the people in the room that might not know what SEL stands for. It's social emotional learning, and there are state standards that require that. So social emotional learning, according to the Ohio Department of Education website. Things like self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills. So the ability to negotiate conflict, like in a classroom study, and responsible decision-making. That's social emotional learning. So just make sure we're all clear on what exactly that means.
It's not required.
There are state standards, correct?
It's not required. It says that on the very first page of the.
So you want to get rid of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationships? I mean, if it's not required.
I'd like the curriculum and the schools to be non-political, and I think a lot of that is in that social emotional learning.
So I'll give an example of an award-winning thing. There are zones of regulations that are used at some of the elementary schools, which are phenomenal in helping little kids understand where they're at, and give them the skills to come back to a space where they are able to actually learn and to function in a classroom. That is what social emotional, that's one example of social emotional learning. We cannot conflate the two, or conflate some political agenda with what it actually is. So maybe we're not going to be debating this tonight, but this is one that our community needs to be very aware of, what these actual activities are, and how it's being conflated. And if the state says this is a standard, these are the things that we find important. Things are, if you've ever been in a classroom, you know that you deal with, you can deal with some very tough situations, and self-awareness, self-management, being able to calm a kindergartner down when they're upset because Bobby took the, you know, Katie's yellow pencil, and they wanted the yellow pencil. There's no learning that can happen there until we can get them to regulate and come back down, and that's essentially the purpose. So there's a lot of conflating. You know, and I wrote this on my card, because you asked, like, what are we willing to fight for? I'm going to protect every single kid in this district. And I'm not going to sit back either and listen to the conflation of concepts that are meant to help our children because of some random boogeyman that's been created over the last year somehow.
Other comments on this topic?
I mean, I don't, SEL promotes data collection, which I don't, I mean, I don't think that's good for our kids. That whole panorama survey, I'm not okay with. I don't know. Anybody else? I mean, it says on the, the second page of that SEL guide for the state, that it's local control. There are no mandates or guidelines for it.
Well, if this board would like to tell our community that we are not going to engage in activities related to zones of regulation, like we do at the elementary school, which every parent in this district who's been in elementary in recent years knows, then the board can say that to the community. If we're not going to deal, do with things related to relationship skills, responsible decision-making, self-awareness, self-management, all of those, then we can communicate that to the community. I will not stand for that. I will say that. I'll go on record any day of the week. But to blanket social emotional learning as some whatever, no. You put that in the context and tell them what you're saying you are not for. You are not for the zones of regulations at Maddox. Okay. Didn't say that.
I mean, I'm not saying that. I mean, do you practice those at home?
Yes.
Do you think them?
Yes.
I know, but.
You too?
But it.
Katie's actually given me some really good strategies with Michael Kins. Thank you.
See, I, I want to.
I feel like.
It says in here, "The State Board of Education formally adopted the standards in June of 2019 to help schools and districts consider their own local implications." That's right. Each district and school will decide for itself the extent to which it uses these standards and how it uses these standards. A school's or district's choice will be informed by the values and needs of its local community. These standards are meant to be integrated into regular daily activities in schools, and they do not need more classes for students or more work for teachers. Okay. So having conversations on both sides of this issue, I believe that everybody in this room wants the best for kids. What we probably should be thinking about here is, this talks about local community and their expectations. So maybe on this one, we're formulating a subgroup, or a forum, or some way to be able to collect information from our parents on subjects like this, and then utilize that as a board to be able to develop a plan for the future that sort of meets the needs, recognizing that we want to be careful about getting ourselves locked into political, but we also want to be mindful of our kids' needs in the classrooms. And so we would involve our community in some of these conversations.
So some of the things that Leslie just said about social emotional learning, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. Some of these are how you just teach in a classroom anyway. It's not necessarily social emotional, like it doesn't even need to have that name attached to it. Some of that is just how you manage a classroom setting with twenty kids in the classroom. You can't have kids just fighting over pencils. You can't have kids, you know, upset because, you know, she's in my chair, and I always sit in that chair because it's red. There are certain things that you just do that, that help you manage a classroom. And, you know, we don't take our friends, I actually just read an article, but I'm not referring to classmates as friends. That's a whole nother story. But we don't take our classmates' stuff, you know? We, we talk about sharing. We talk about being respectful of our environment. All of that stuff goes hand in hand with just being a productive part of your classroom and society. That doesn't necessarily mean we have to have, like, surveys in the classroom either. I, but to say that all of this is, is bad or unnecessary, I think, is a little out of the realm of how you actually manage a classroom. And, I mean, I use this stuff at home often with, with six kids. Like, otherwise, it would just be pure chaos. You know, we, we use our words, and we talk to each other, and, you know, I understand that you want to play with that, but, you know, we're going to let so-and-so play with it for some time, and then, and then you'll get a turn. Like, that's just, or maybe you guys can play together and do it, use the same stuff together. So some of that's just how you would manage a classroom. It doesn't even need to have a label. So, I don't know. That's really where I was going with that.
I think we've been doing this for a long time, and the fact that SEL has just become SEL over the past couple of years, it's this key word all of a sudden. I, my son's twenty-three years old, and grew up in the Forest Hill School District, going to these schools, having great success, and teachers have, our teachers are fantastic. They know how to deal with this stuff, and we have been addressing this over the years. It's an evolution. And the zones of regulation maybe just popped up over the past few years, and now they're just implementing them. Or, I mean, they didn't have them when my son was, was around, so. Can you say?
Yeah, I have my masters. I've been teaching for twenty-one years, and I got my masters in school counseling. When I was twenty-five, I'm now on my way to forty-three, and I learned it back then. So your son at twenty-three would have been in elementary school at the time. Perhaps it's just not verbiage that you maybe heard at home, or the classroom teacher communicated that to you, but it's absolutely a hundred percent something that I learned, gosh, how long?
I learned, I learned that when I was going to school. Now, maybe zones of regulation itself might be a new term, but, but the process is all the same.
And I'm not trying to hijack, it's just I've been a high school teacher for twenty-one years, and I spent a good portion of my day emailing back and forth with parents about social emotional issues and mental wellness at the end of the quarter today. I teach juniors. They're stressed out about college. They're taking AP exams, like. I'm, I'm sorry to hijack, I'm just saying, like, these are things that I've, as an educator and a school counselor.
I'm saying that, you know, we do have great teachers.
Oh, we do.
We have excellent teachers.
Yeah.
And I think it's almost putting them down by saying that we don't, we've not instituted these, these help, this.
I'm saying, as a, as a teacher, there are many times throughout, but we have great teachers here.
We, we need to keep this.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I, you know, I did ask you, so, and I appreciate.
I'm happy to talk to you at the end of the meeting.
You know, I think this whole, that go back to the SEL thing, it's become this hypersensitive acronym, and it has been politicized, and there are pieces of it, like you said, that, you know, is political pieces that I don't think should be involved in, in the district. So the zones of regulation, yes. I mean, they're, it's working. I, I went through four highs, or elementary schools. I, I took course, and just the kids' engagement with the teachers and the environment there and there, it was, it was great. Every school, Air, Wilson, and Mercer, I walked through. And just seeing how the teachers operate with the kids, it's, you know, it was very impressive, very impressive. So.
And Wilson does the forty, the forty developmental assets. I mean, I think that's, that's great. I just don't, non-political, right, left, I just don't want it in the classroom for our kids.
I wonder how many times, my kid's in third grade now. I'm going to go home and ask her, how many times has a teacher asked you if you're a liberal, conservative, Democrat, independent, whatever? I'm going to guess. She's going to say, uh, no.
That's not what I'm saying. Thanks, Scott. Go ahead. Yep. We're running out of time. We're actually, we're over time.
Continued point of view. Review discipline trends to see where common infractions may be, and design professional development for staff and education materials for parents and, and community to better understand. So we have been asked by a board member to put together some disciplinary things so that we can take a look. We have that information. We send that into the Ohio Department of Education, Education for our EMA system every year. That is all available to us. What can be difficult is the infractions themselves and how they are coded, and then putting the main with the student. So we don't want to do things like that. So we're putting that together, and we'll be able to show you those trends. I can tell you that after COVID, there have been more conversations at the central office regarding student discipline that comes our way out of the buildings than ever before. And when I say that, I mean expulsionary discussions, which goes back to way when we started this meeting about our work with these agencies that are in our area. So we're seeing heightened levels of student discipline. I'm not going to say it's COVID. I'm going to say that we're seeing heightened levels, and we're also seeing heightened levels of mental concerns from kids and their health and their wellness. So health sort of on the side, mental wellness, mental issues, and a lot of stress right now. A lot of things coming together, so that's important. And the discipline related to that is also an important part. So we want to, we want to start to take a look at that. Interestingly enough, we have a family development for public health. They're doing the same thing. They've dropped the entire county. And we're linked with them in that meeting that we had the other day, so that's good. So we will continue to put this information together. I think it's good information to have to make decisions. So the plan is going to be, this one's kind of an important, urgent one, as we. So, the plan is going to be, this one's kind of an important, urgent one, as we, I think, getting a sense of where we are with our discipline relative to the questions asked by our leaders. Thank you. Create consistency in principal newsletters, format, and content. That's urgent, and that can be done. We're working with Josh right now on that. It's also linked to some of our website work. And so, I think the goal there was, if you are a student in the elementary, middle, or high school, you'll see consistent places where things show up in principal's newsletters. One of the things we're going to try to do over the next few months is drive everybody to that website, in one spot that's easily accessible for individuals and also is easy to move with. So not only are we updating, Josh has already spent weeks in his new role putting information out of that thing. It is, Josh, let's, if you don't know, is our communication coordinator. He's over there, he's been with us for about three weeks now. And he has already started digging into the website. We're talking about links, we're talking about easier navigation, we're talking about updates that are consistent with some of the things that you've been asking us about. And having that information available to parents in a quicker time period. So that also is coming. So feel good about that one. We've shown you the PMP, we've done the review of the five-year forecast, we reviewed the staffing issues that were, that are upcoming. We've kind of come to close now in this meeting. Not sure that we have, you know, other than that RFP, closure on all of these items, but we do have closure on one. We're going to start to come back to you with some scenarios regarding finances in the school district. And since that is urgent and important, that's going to be coming in the upcoming weeks. So we'll be making those decisions. And that all happens in an open room. So if it doesn't happen in a work session, it'd be happening in an open meeting at the board. So, you know, that doesn't get done behind the actual approval of all of that stuff. So that'll all be like it should be, up above board. So, other questions or concerns or comments? This is tough, I know. Because generally speaking, there's two new members to the board, or one new member to the board. And so there's a bunch of people at the table who have cycled through a couple of times. It's your first time for many, it is, the first time. As the cycle continues, you're going to have a much better feel for how these things work. You're going to have more congruency in your thought and in the direction you're giving us, and it'll, it'll flow a little bit easier for you. So I apologize if you were uncomfortable at all there, if it was cumbersome for you, but these are discussions that we just need to have, because we haven't been together for a long time. And we need to have, on this side of the table, individuals understanding that all that you're doing to try to learn and come together with your direction to the future. It's all good stuff. It's slow-moving, but it is effective, and it will pay off in the long run. So I appreciate your time. Do you have any other comments from anybody that's on our team? Fancy's going to stay with us, and Rob is. We do have an executive session, Mr. Bit, and we have Aaron, who is on here. I don't want to say the final words. This is House Bill, the President of the Board. You can bring the meeting to a closing rate if you deem appropriate.
I'll thank every board member here, for your input and working hard with all of our weekly requests. And I know it's been a lot of information, and at times you don't know what, what the ask was, but really appreciate the hard work that you all are putting into this. I'm very excited about the school district, and what we have on tap, and what we want to do to make our school district the best district, that we, that we can make it. So, with that, we do a definitive session.
Great. Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G3, I hereby move the Board adjourned the executive session of the Board and/or the school district that are subject to pending or imminent court action.
Second. Mr. Bit? Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Rasmussen? Yes. Mrs. Jennings?
Yeah.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Husbell?